I'm good on this side.
It is 7:30, so we'll call the regular city council meeting of Little Falls City Council for June 20th to order. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Inherent place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of June 6, 2022, the regular meeting of June 6, 2022, and the recess meeting of June 6, 2022. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Conoffler, second by Councilmember Storey. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 106-851 through 106-964 totaling $614,503.99. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschik, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. There are none. Consent agenda. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, May and June 2022. Receive. Housing and redevelopment authority minutes, March and May 2022. Receive. Liability coverage waiver, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust deny. Out-of-state travel, city administrator ICMA conference, September 2022. Approve. Police report, May 2022. Receive. Public works report, May 2022. Receive. Wastewater report, May 2022. Receive. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I move to receive, deny, and approve the items from the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Storey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing. Appeal of Heritage Preservation Commission decision, approval of deconstruction, demolition permit, Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls by Friends of Hurley Hall. The public hearing on the demolition permit of Hurley Hall will now begin at 7:33. John, please read into the record the list of anyone who submitted written comments on the subject by the deadline of noon today. All written comments received by the deadline were forwarded to council prior to this meeting and provided to the appellant and the applicant.
Thank you, Council President. We had written comments from Colin Francis, Connie Lees, Lois Machi, and Ren Holland.
We will now receive comments from the public. Participants in the public hearing will be expected to follow the city council's rules of conduct. Persons wishing to make public comment must follow these rules. You must state your name and address for the record at the beginning of your comment period. Your comment must be related to the subject of the hearing. Each person will have three minutes to address the council. We'll be using a timer up on the screen, and each person may only speak once during the public hearing. So when someone would like to speak, if you'll raise your hand, I'll recognize you and then go up to the podium. Do we... Do we have a timer?
Yep, I'll get it.
Otherwise, I'll grab my phone. Go ahead.
My name is Teresa with an H. Nygard spelled N-Y-G-A-R-D. And hello, everybody. I don't live in Little Falls, I live in Randall, but I do come into town and enjoy some of the old architecture. So to the comment that there's no use...
Your address, please.
I'm sorry. 7724 Lake Camille Drive, Randall. Okay, thank you. To the comment that there's no use for Hurley Hall, I would say there is indeed a use. I'm a real estate agent, I'm just a residential agent, but I did look up the property and it's never been listed. I can't find anything that shows it's been listed. So if nobody knows it's for sale, it's going to be really hard to sell it or find somebody who wants to use it. I haven't seen any newspaper ads or even a sign out when I went by. So if there is indeed use, it can be listed. Commercial properties do sell in here, and there are many agents who sell commercial properties. I've provided you all a list that has 20 agents. These agents have all sold commercial properties in the area. Some of them have sold multimillion-dollar properties, several of them. So to the point that there is use, CAG Dave Picorni and his wife Pam, who the council's working with, you know, you respect for his apartment building plan, I spoke to him, he and his wife have actively been working to preserve three historical properties in Jordan, Shakopee, and Chaska areas because they really, they have a use for it. There's one they're working on to restore and convert into apartments in Chaska, and it's a convent and a church. So that's an example of there is use for these old buildings. And the council, in fact, its choice to, that you want an apartment building, while that says this could be used for housing, there is indeed a use for it. And you won't actually know that unless you put it on the market. It really does need to be listed. So I do recommend deferring your decision two years to give time to list the property and requiring the property be listed within 30 days. The reason why two years is because commercial contracts usually take, are two years and long. Because there are different types of contracts, they operate differently, they take longer to sell, they're more complex transaction. You need a really experienced agent to do them, I'm just residential. So that's why I provided you this list of agents who have experience doing commercial work. It's a different kind of animal. And, let's see. Now, this notion about it takes $12 million to restore, that's just one estimate. Every person who, investor who comes to look at the property will do his own numbers and make his own calculations. He won't rely on somebody else's numbers, and he might restore the property differently than what the sisters had intended for. Commercial properties do sell here, and there is definitely a use for them, and all these agents can attest to that. I'm willing to help you find an agent, you know, call them or contact them if you need help doing that. I just would love to see the property restored rather than stuff destroyed. That's what I really love to see as an agent, because I love buildings. That's why, part of why I'm an agent. So just to conclude my recommendation, and also the outstate, the thing about the outstate market is that it's gone crazy since 2020. And so it would be able to sell. So my closing is just to recommend you defer the decision for two years and then ask them that they list it within 30 days. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
My name is Mary Poser. My address is 142272 242nd Avenue, Pierce, Minnesota. Six years ago, I wrote a letter after the lawsuit came out to the public, and I'd like to read that letter again. "To the Friends of Hurley Hall, the building didn't cause the memory, the building didn't teach you, and the building didn't heal you. If you cherish your memories, write about them. Share them with your family, friends, and community. Put an ad in the paper and pay for that instead of paying a lawyer to save a building. Your memory is about the sisters and interaction with them, not the memory of the building. If you were touched by the care you received in that building, share that story, share that memory. The building didn't care for you, it didn't heal you. The sisters cared for you. They helped you heal. That story needs to be shared, not the building. If you received your nursing education in that building, the building didn't teach you, the sisters taught you. Share that story. Put that in the paper. Pay for that ad. Don't pay a lawyer to save the building. If you received your high school education at St. Francis and boarded in one of the rooms at Hurley Hall, your teachers and your classmates made the memories. Share those memories. Visit that sister, if she is still here, or share that memory with a sister that is still with us. Come visit, hold the hand of a sister, and spend time with them. If you had a classmate that you lost touch with, spend some time finding that person. Go visit them. Pay for a trip to see that classmate instead of spending money to pay for a lawyer. If you think the building helped the Little Falls community and the surrounding area, you have a misplaced sense of community. The people, the sisters helped build this community. Now you are putting not only a financial burden on the sisters, you are taking away their resources to continue to help this community. Worst of all, you are taking away the resources that help care for the remainder of the sisters. Let go of the building and latch onto your spirit, and it will take you to the heart of this community, the people, the sisters who live here, not the buildings we live and work in. Thank you."
Would someone else like to speak? Go ahead.
My name is Erin Hanafenberg. I am the Policy Director and Deputy Director at Rethos Places Reimagined. My address is 75 West 5th Street, St. Paul, Minnesota, 55102. I just have a question, I guess initially about the process. These are not the remarks that I have prepared, but my understanding was that this was to be an appeal of a decision by the Heritage Preservation Commission, and that there would be an opportunity to hear from the Friends of Hurley Hall who would like to present their appeal and why they are challenging the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, and then that it would be open to public comment. So can you please, Mr. President, explain what the order of business actually is here?
We're first having the public hearing, taking public comment, and then we will have a time when the Friends of Hurley Hall have time to present
Okay.
their information, and then the sister's lawyer will have a time to present their information.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's not clear on the agenda, and we want to make sure that we actually have a time to address our concerns. Thank you.
I think this is the only time for public comment.
Council President, and for the public, just to clarify, under the city code, the council, under a different provision, is to hear public comment prior to hearing the appeal from the HPC. Therefore, this is the public comment and the public hearing. It is for those who are not going to be speaking on behalf of the appellant or the applicant. Each of those parties will have a 30-minute time, which has been explained to and sent via memo to those parties and provided to the public in the packet.
Would anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
Lori Toma, 14984 Garden Court, Little Falls. I brought with me this book, Little Falls Historic Downtown Walking and Driving Tour. I believe it was published probably by the city council, but I'm not sure on that. The booklet contains articles of many Little Falls historic buildings, including the beautiful legendary account of Hurley Hall. It explains the historic beginnings of the 16 Franciscan Sisters who hired, I think it's Mr. Wolke, who designed the St. Francis Convent, now, well, Hurley Hall, and so began the community of the Franciscan Sisters in 1891. The first building, Hurley Hall, eventually contained a convent, chapel, hospital, orphanage, housing for the ages, 1930, the high school. This booklet goes on to describe the, many descriptions of all the historic buildings in Little Falls, which is, I think, what the city is trying to promote, that common tour here for the historic value. Many of the historic buildings, especially right downtown, have kept their historical presence, but they're now used for new purposes, right down the main street. My mind goes blank right now. But it's a historic preservation of the building, but new purpose. I just want to know what the city council or our city wants to be known as. Are we still going to maintain the historic value? Is that what's drawing people to our town, or maybe just coming here for Walmart? I don't know. Thank you.
Go ahead, Craig.
Craig Slossford, 12753 Hilton Road, Little Falls. I'm here to support the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls and their decision to deconstruct and repurpose Hurley Hall. You know me as a very passionate and compassionate person, and I myself initially thought, wow, Hurley Hall would make a great place for many people who are homeless. And yet, we didn't have the $3 to $4 million, and that was a big part. If somebody else would come with that, great. But I guess what I want to point out is that there have been three years, you know, three to four years of the opportunity, and I have great passion and respect for the people who are hoping to save it as well. But I've come to the decision on a personal basis that we need to honor the Franciscan Sisters. It's best to honor the committee's recommendation as well in terms of that. As to a possible last-minute buyer, I kind of, I love, I'm so optimistic. I love to have opportunities for saving things. But I do have a serious question after this amount of time as to whether that would come to fruition. If that person could produce now $9 million tonight, that might be something to take into consideration. Anyways, I have great respect for the process, and again, I'm supporting the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls and your committee's recommendation.
Go ahead.
Can everyone hear me? Good evening. My name is Colin Francis. I live at 716 First Street Northeast. I am interested in buying, renovating, and repurposing Hurley Hall as a mixed-use development. Many of you have seen my broad strokes proposal, which was put together quickly, because the church has refused to give me 60 days to build a plan, financing, and a partnership. Although I have recently acquired a partner, and we have more than double the cash than I did a week ago. We have altogether $250,000 with financing. That brings us to over a million, and we're just getting started. From the beginning, the sisters have refused to talk to me. My only point of contact has been with Mr. Manderscheid, and he has ignored my request to walk through the building twice. When I attempted to email the sisters and offer directly, I found that their emails had been blocked. I made a quick offer for Hurley. It was a low offer. Church leadership rejected the offer, but they did not want a higher price. They wanted evidence of $12 million in financing, a long track record, and definitive plans. These are very unusual requirements from a would-be seller, although I do appreciate the church's concern for my finances. Since I've been told that I do not qualify as a buyer, let me state what a seller looks like, since the church has stated that they would sell. A seller advertises their building. A seller takes any offer above negative $1 million for a building when they value it at negative $1 million. Also, a seller does not worry about the buyer's renovation costs. I find the games being played here where the church states a willingness to sell but behaves otherwise to be odd. My own estimates for the conversion diverge significantly from the church's, as stated in my second letter, which I believe you all have. This is in line with residential new construction on a per-square-foot basis. Let's see, I already covered that. I have stated the benefits to the church and to Little Falls renovating this building. It has space for more or less 36 living units, which I'm told Little Falls could make use of. I've also stated my intent to engage the services of New History, one of the premier historic preservation consultation firms in the country. Hurley Hall has a future. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello, my name is Richard Machi, 138179, 133479 Street, Little Falls, Minnesota. We need to work really hard to keep historic buildings standing in Little Falls. Hurley Hall is in danger at the present time as the number of Franciscan Sisters is declining and don't think they need Hurley Hall, so want to demolish it. A buyer has come forth who is interested in purchasing Hurley Hall, which will help both the sisters and the city. Demolition is expensive, like over $1 million, for this property and bad for the environment. The sisters wouldn't have to pay for the demolition and all the hazardous waste cost. The city wants more housing, there it is, just waiting for the buyer to use his skills and make Hurley Hall shine and reusable. What a win-win situation. From the city of Little Falls website, it says, "The Heritage Preservation Commission's primary purpose to work on the preservation and protection of all buildings and lands, having a special historical, cultural, and aesthetic interest or value within the city of Little Falls." Why wasn't approval given at the last HPC meeting? Please let the buyer restore, reuse, and save Hurley Hall, which will help Little Falls. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
I'm Rachel Schilling, Fort Ripley, 25751 185th Avenue. I too do respect the desire, you know, that we respect our elders and respect the sisters. I have Franciscans in my family, and it's very difficult. I have a lot of love in my heart for this town, for the buildings, for the people, the community, and especially the sisters. I mean, my family, we volunteered there and did a lot of stuff before the COVID pandemic. It was difficult to work during that time and find some people, and, you know, things were put on hold during that time. But in the same vein as the Franciscan values, I think, I think it could be, you know, I think the last meeting, it was expressed that, gosh, if somebody could come up with a plan, or like, somebody said, I wish that somebody would have been coming today with the money. And, you know, my mom always said dime late and dollar short, but hopefully that's not the case today. You know, it is last-ditch effort, but I think, you know, there are two buyers that are very interested. And also, you know, look at Belle Prairie, they added on, and they had way more money. This fundraising stuff, this community is known for giving and their support. You know, we had Mary Lord School tripled. They wanted to get a fundraiser going this spring. Last minute, they had a matching grant. They tripled what they wanted to get, almost $100,000 almost, in like, two weeks. So this community is known to come forward and shine, like somebody said. I do understand it does belong to the sisters, it is their decision, but also I think it is the community too, because that was given by that mill owner. The money was raised by the church and the community. So I think in their goodwill that they had to give like that, we can have that happen again. I think it just needs to be asked for, and I think everyone would stand up and support the sisters in that way to help them with that building. And, you know, even if you sold it for a dollar, you'd be making out on the deal because you wouldn't have to pay the demolition cost, and then you could save that building. There's so many grants, and there's so much money out there for this type of thing that I just wasn't aware of until people educated me on that. There had been a petition in 2016 that was, had 47 signatures in a very short amount of time. Eighty percent of the people asked were in favor of saving that building, and I think if you just get the word out, I think there would be no problem doing that. We have the Buckman Building, my grandma lived there. We have Belle Prairie Apartments, where Holy Angels Academy was. That can happen again. No memorial will ever, will ever take the place of this majestic Hurley Hall, and the repurposing, that can happen. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? If no one else would like to speak, we'll, go ahead, Carol.
Hi, Carol Anderson from Community Development, 316 East Broadway in Little Falls. I spoke at the HPC meeting, and I'll kind of reiterate what I said here that I said there. I had a unique experience that I got to work with the sisters to try to market the entire complex, and we worked for years. And one of the reasons that developers weren't too hot on the property was because of Hurley Hall and the extreme amount of money it would take in order to bring that up to code. And I remember, I was there at the meetings when they brought all the sisters together to make the decisions, and it was very painful for them, because these women left their family to become a Franciscan sister. They gave up, you know, I'm not going to have a family, I'm not going to wear colorful clothing, I'm going to wear a habit, which on a day like today, I'm sure they can remember, wasn't very pleasant. And, and they wanted to do that because they loved God and they wanted to help people. And they made a vow. Vows are two ways. They said, I'm going to live in poverty, chastity, and obedience. But the sisters gave a vow back to them, that we will feed you, we will clothe you, we will house you, we will take care of your medical expenses until the day that you die. And they have a limited amount of money, and they knew that they wouldn't be able to take care of this building and be able to fulfill the vow they made to their members. And really, the decision was made 20 years ago of what do you do when you, do we redo Mary Hall or Hurley Hall? They chose Mary Hall, knowing in the future they may have to deconstruct Hurley Hall. So it wasn't easy for them. They told me how they, when they joined their new family, they'd be down on their hands and knees scrubbing with a brush the wooden floor. So Hurley Hall meant a lot to them, but they realized that they have to let it go so that they can care for their sisters. So we didn't see anyone during that time come forward. When they were sued, they made an agreement that it would be until 2019. 2019 has come and gone, nothing has happened, and so the cities, the sisters have decided to deconstruct this building. They've been here for 130 years, and they respect the community. And it is their property, they have the ability to do with it what they want, and so please, respect the sisters as they have respected the community for the last 130 years.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If there's no one else who'd like to speak, we will close this hearing at 7:58. The council will now hear the appeal of the Heritage Preservation Commission's approval of the demolition permit for the property at 118 Southeast 8th Avenue, commonly referred to as Hurley Hall. As a reminder, all participants, all participants are expected to follow the city council's rules of conduct. I will now introduce the parties who will be involved in the appeal tonight. The Franciscan Sisters are the owners of Hurley Hall and applied for the demolition permit. They may be referred to as applicant throughout the process. They are represented here by Mark Manderscheid. The Friends of Hurley Hall, a nonprofit, appealed the decision of the Heritage Preservation Commission to approve the demolition permit for Hurley Hall. They may be referred to as the appellant throughout the hearing. They are represented, I am not sure who. I don't have that name. Would someone like to provide it? By Lois Machi, thank you.
Yes, please.
The city council will be assisted by a number of staff members during the hearing. City admin- City Administrator John Rodamacher and City Attorney Alyssa Harrington. Ms. Harrington will now discuss the process we will follow tonight, which is intended to preserve the fairness and integrity of this appeal.
Thank you, Council President, Council Members, Staff, Participants. Tonight, we are going to go through the process of an appeal of the Heritage Preservation Commission's approval of the demolition permit for Hurley Hall. The demolition procedure has been put together based on the concepts of due process, both substantive and procedural, as well as the guidance provided in the city code. The city code does not require a public hearing prior to the appeal of an HPC decision, but as a public hearing prior to a hearing of an appeal brought by the permit applicant is required, the City Council has made the decision to voluntarily hold the public hearing prior to the appeal hearing. The city has sent adequate public notice of such and included the option to submit written comments prior to the hearing. Mr. Rodamacher earlier presented the names of the four people who submitted comments. In addition, the comments were received at the Heritage Preservation Commission by a number of people in attendance at that night, as well as by the applicant, the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls. Tonight, the public appeal hearing process will proceed as follows. First, we will start a, we will discuss the process of the appeal and discuss the procedural status of the matter. Next, the appellant will have the opportunity to present their case. The Friends of Hurley Hall are the appellant, and represented by Lois Machi, Erin Hanafenberg, and Connie Lees. They will have a combined 30-minute maximum to present their case. After that 30 minutes are the point at which the appellant is done with their presentation of argument, the City Council will have an opportunity to ask the appellant questions. After questions of the appellant by the City Council, the applicants, the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls, will have the opportunity to be heard by the City Council to argue their position again for 30 minutes. When that time has elapsed, the City Council may question the applicants. After those two presentations, if there is any additional need for staff presentations, they will take care, place at that time. After that, the City Council members may ask City Staff or the City Attorney any questions regarding substantive issues or questions on the appeal process and the deliberative process moving forward. After that, the City Council will discuss and deliberate, deliberate on the substantive issues on appeal. The Council may then make a decision by motion and vote, following the usual course of business. In this instance, as a appeal hearing, the City Council's decision is limited to a review of the HPC's decision, subject to the provision of City Code Section 2.02.G.E., which states, "The City Council may modify or overrule the Commission's decision, but only if the project is found to be consistent with the United States Secretary of Interior's standards or the adopted heritage preservation guidelines for, in this case, the landmark of Hurley Hall." Unlike the broad discretion the Council typically enjoys while considering matters in its normal legislative capacity, when hearing an appeal, the Council is acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. As such, the Council's discretion is limited. When acting in this quasi-judicial capacity, as it does during this appeal hearing, the Council is acting like a judge-like, in a judge-like manner, and must base its decision only on the testimony and evidence received during the hearing and on the record, as it applies to the individual land use application at issue. The City Council will be able to look at what the Heritage Preservation Commission's job was during their hearing, if they followed those standards, and if they did so in a reasonable way. That is the task of the City Council tonight.
Are there any questions from the Council regarding the process, the role of the Council, or the standard for review? Next, City Attorney Harrington will present the procedural status of the matter.
Thank you, Council President, Council Members, Staff, Audience. The Sisters applied for a demolition or deconstruction permit officially by the city. It's called a demolition permit. You might hear it be referred to as a deconstruction permit as well. They applied for the permit. The permit was found to, the application was found to be complete, and so it was passed on to the Heritage Preservation Commission as in, as, because in 2002, Hurley Hall was designated as a local historic landmark. The Heritage Preservation Commission, under the city code, must perform a review of that to see whether or not it is in line with the historical preservation guidelines that are set forth for that specific landmark. If it is not, they have the opportunity to delay the permit for up to 90 days. That is the option, either approve it or delay it for up to 90 days. Since they approved it, there is an opportunity for either the applicant or another aggrieved party to appeal that decision to the City Council. The City Council has the option before it, as I've mentioned before, of either affirming the decision of the Heritage Preservation Commission, overruling the decision, or postponing a decision. Should the Council overrule the decision, the city code notes that if no other action has been taken within 60 days, the city building official shall issue the permit if all other standards are met for the demolition permit. So at issue tonight, that would be the, the effect if there was to be a overruling of the decision of the HPC, would be that the permit would be at this point denied, but it would be a 60-day delay until the building official would be instructed by city code to issue that permit regardless. At this point, then, the HPC on June 6th held the hearing, held a public hearing, and made their decision. The Friends of Hurley Hall made their appeal on June 7th, the following day, and a public hearing notice went out for tonight's public hearing and appeals process. Therefore, this decision is before the Council on appeal of whether to affirm the decision of the HPC, overrule it, or postpone the decision. Are there any questions at this point from the Council?
Yeah, Ms. President, as I had asked earlier, is, would a motion to refer this back to the HPC be in order?
Council President, Council Member Storely, a motion to return this to the HPC would be in order in addition to a, a motion to recess the appeal hearing or until July 5th or another specific date to gather more information and then direct the HPC to gather that information. However, to simply return it to them, it is unclear what the, what the legal effect that would be on those 60-day and 90-day timers, and so we would be in a bit of a unknown place.
Any other questions? Next, we will begin our presentations from the appellant and then the applicant. Each will get 30 minutes to present their case, followed by questions from the Council. Again, we'll use the timer on the screen. The appellant, Friends of Hurley Hall, will go first. You may begin your presentation.
Do you need my name now too?
Yes, please.
Lois Machi, 138, 34179th Street, Little Falls, Minnesota. I am up here because I am asking for a please to deny the demolition permit for Hurley Hall. There are two parties that are interested in purchasing Hurley Hall, and who knows how many other buyers would have offered it if it had been advertised by the Sisters. Either purchase would help both the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls and the city. The Sisters would not have to pay the over $1 million for demolition, and the city would get some of the housing that they say local studies show they need. On the city website, Little Falls website, different, of different boards and commissions, it says, "The Heritage Preservation Commission's primary purpose is work on preservation and protection of buildings and lands having special historical, cultural, ethnic interests and value within the City of Little Falls." This is saying protect and preserve Hurley Hall. It doesn't say to tear it down or to give the permit for doing it, so please deny the demolition permit for Hurley Hall, to keep it protected. Allow the buyers that we have, two of them, that want to buy it and to make good use out of it, to use the building for betterment of the Little Falls community. In order for Hurley Hall to become a local landmark, both the Little Falls Heritage Preservation Commission and the Little Falls City Council had to approve it. Continue to support your decision for Hurley Hall, so Hurley Hall will remain the important landmark by denying the demolition permit. The City of Little Falls and the Franciscan Sisters are throwing money away by demolishing Hurley Hall. Take a strong look and don't destroy this restorable, reusable, majestic building, because once it's gone, it is gone. Please deny the demolition permit, so the buyers that are out there can help our community. And when you, some of the things that we had heard from Michael Coop is that the Heritage Preservation Commission does not make the, does not make the decision on how, on who gives the permits. We were informed that the city, that they just give a recommendation and the city was supposed to. So take a look at what's going on and deny the demolition, demolition permit.
Good evening, my name is Erin Hanafenberg. I will spell that for the record. First name is Erin, E-R-I-N, middle name H-A-N-A-F, as in Frank, I-N, last name Berg, B-E-R-G. I'm at 75 West 5th Street in St. Paul, 55102. I am the Policy Director and Deputy Director at Rethos Places Reimagined. We are a nonprofit organization with a mission to connect people to historic places and promote community vitality. I myself hold a master's degree in historic preservation and have worked in a, as a professional in this field since 1997. I served as a staff member to a Historic Landmarks Commission for the first seven years of my career, and I was on the board of the National Alliance of Preservation Committees for four years. I have been familiar with Hurley Hall since 2015, when the State Historic Preservation Office held its annual Preserve Minnesota Conference on the campus of the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls, and the building was first proposed for demolition. And I do have concerns about how the HPC has reviewed this demolition request and would like to speak to those. In the document that was submitted to the Little Falls HPC that summarized the events over the last 20 years concerning the future of Hurley Hall, one key piece of information was left out, that the building was listed as a historic landmark by the City of Little Falls Heritage Preservation Commission. As it's been stated this evening, it's in 2002. I have in my files a copy of a letter dated from Christmas Eve of 2002 from the Deputy Shipoo, Brita Bloomberg, who acknowledged that the building's historic significance was intact and stating that Hurley Hall is worthy of local designation under the city's historic preservation ordinance. At least as recently as 2015, I haven't been by this building since then, but there was an oval plaque on the exterior of Hurley Hall right next to the main entrance that read, "This property recognized by Heritage Preservation Commission, Little Falls Historic Landmark, built 1891." The Little Falls Heritage Preservation Ordinance states that, quote, "The city shall review all applications for a demolition permit to determine whether the affected property has been identified as a historic resource. If the city determines that the property is a historic resource, the Heritage Preservation Commission may withhold a demolition permit for a period of up to 90 days," end quote. The fact that Hurley Hall is a historic landmark cannot be in dispute. It has been designated as such by the Little Falls HPC and by the City Council, and it is found to be eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Based on my understanding of similar ordinances, I believe that the next sentence of the ordinance means that the Heritage Preservation Commission should deny a demolition application when a resource is found to be historic, because after all, the HPC is charged with preserving and protecting historic resources. But if the HPC finds that demolition may be warranted, it should delay such, such action for a period of no more than 90 days. We are confident, oh, I actually want to address first the Secretary of the Interior Standards, since those are also referenced in the landmarks ordinance or the HPC ordinance, and were cited in, in your attorney's explanation of this proceeding. These are the ones that are published in the Little Falls Downtown Design Guidelines, which apply to, I presume, all properties that are landmark designated in Little Falls. And it's on page 20, or 66, and Appendix A, these are the nationally designated Secretary of the Interior standards have been in place since 1966. The first two address what I think we are talking about this evening. Secretary of Standard Number One says that "Every reasonable effort shall be made to provide a compatible use for a property which requires minimal alteration of the building, structure, or site and its environment, or to use a property for its originally intended purpose." Number Two states that "The distinguishing original qualities or character of a building, structure, or site and its environment shall not be destroyed. The removal or alteration of any historic material or distinctive architectural features should be avoided when possible." We are confident that alternatives to demolition do exist for Hurley Hall. As has already been stated at the HPC meeting and before this body, there is a need for housing in the community, and Hurley Hall would likely be a good candidate for reuse. Over the past two or three years, we have seen successful examples of buildings of this scale that have been converted to apartments in New Ulm, Cloquet, and Tuane Winona. Similar projects are underway in International Falls, Duluth, and right here in the region, in Eagle Bend. These deals do take time to pull together, and they take a willingness to partner with funders, community development entities, and the broader community at a level that the Sisters have seemed unwilling to consider. Finally, as my organization was invoked several times by the Sisters' attorney at the HPC meeting, I would like the opportunity to clarify our involvement. As I mentioned, I first became aware of the Sisters' plans to demolish Hurley Hall in the fall of 2015. I met with the Sisters a short time later and shared information about the public funds that could be available to help the Sisters pay for renovation and repairs, and the tax credits that could be helped, could help private developers rehabilitate the building for another use. My suggestions appeared to fall on deaf ears, and the Sisters' leaders seemed very unwilling to engage with my organization. to engage with my organization or take advantage of the support we were offering. At the time that the sisters, or the Friends of Hurley Hall settled their lawsuit with the sisters, when the sisters themselves agreed to pause their demolition plans, we offered our assistance again to help find a buyer for the building. But the sisters themselves never listed the building for sale, never stated a purchase price, or even articulated what kind of reuse plans they would be willing to consider. Nor, as I understand it, have they at any time contacted the city or the HPC to ask for guidance, or information, or assistance, which is ironic, because the city is the only other entity that has a codified interest, it's a locally designated landmark, by nature of, in seeing Hurley Hall preserved. During the six years that there was radio silence from the sisters on the matter of preservation, they were apparently working with a consultant to draw up detailed plans for the building's removal and the memorial garden in its place, all while ignoring the leaky hole in the roof of the building. I have seen historic buildings in far worse condition than this one, that have been successfully rehabilitated and have become economic and cultural anchors for their communities. Many cities vary existence and main economic engines are due to the fact that they chose preservation over demolition again and again. And with patience, hard work, and partnership, these historic places are now thriving. There's no reason that Hurley Hall cannot be one such place, but the city must uphold its ordinance and help the sisters seek assistance for it to stand a chance. I will hand the remainder of our time over to Connie Lies, and then back to Lois Machi. Thank you.
My name is Connie Lies, L-I-E-S, 640 East 2nd Street, Litchfield, Minnesota. To let you know, I sat on the HPC and the City Council of Litchfield for 12 years, actually longer with the HPC. I ended up being elected after that, elected to the city council because of a 1900 building on, in the National Register of Historic Places that was voted to demolish. Over a period of time, the city council voted seven times to demolish that building. Every one of those times was blocked on the merits of the law. After seven years, the council, all but one person, had been completely replaced, and a buyer came forth that was viable, that offered $1, and assumed the cost of demolition that everybody was so certain was going to happen. That building is now used by the city, it's used by the public, it is used almost 100% of the time. At the time, it was slated to cost $6 million to rehab, we only spent about $1.2 million. Most of the costs were inflated, which begs me to the sisters. The thing I learned my time on the HPC and the city council, and from, especially from the League of Minnesota Cities, is you cannot look at who owns a property that has absolutely no bearing on the property. The property must beak to the law, and your law states that you must preserve it. So I want to talk about their costs. They came up with $12 million. I went through the cost sheet and I went through their analysis, and I find that that is reflecting certain things that aren't necessarily have to be done. They're also reflecting that the sisters would have to hire everything done, whereas a developer usually has their own crews. So instead of $75 an hour to pay for someone to do it, a developer probably pays his workers $20 an hour. Big difference, I can bring in a lot less. We know that the roof is bad. That is probably the most damaging thing to the building is that the roof is bad, and yet that's only 257,000 plus 46,000 to repair. Nowhere near a $12 million cost. They state that all the windows need to be replaced, but the National Interior Standards state that those windows should be rehabbed. We did all of them in that Opera House, we didn't have to replace a single window. There are way, way wonderful ways to preserve wooden windows, and they're much better than the metal ones. It said the exterior doors needed to be replaced, they are not, by code, required to replace any of them. They are also part of the historic features. Then it talks about the stair code issues. Historic buildings have different codes. I did bring them with me. When you look at new building, you look at certain height of rails and guards, you look at tread sizes, that is not true in historic buildings. In fact, it states that they don't have to meet those. Also, door openings do not have to meet the codes of a modern building, so there are many things that the structural people did not take into account for historic building. They also have on this list here that the southeast addition has to be demolished. That doesn't necessarily true, that was something they wanted to do and had added on. As we look at the merits of the building, the, as I said, the roof is bad, and we know that, and that has to be done. I put pictures in front of you that show the good sides. The masonry, their thing is, it's overall good. The minor things that are wrong with the mason, masonry can be easily repaired. We did it at the Opera House, did not have to do anything. We replaced a few bricks where they had spalled, and we cleaned them up. This is, when you see cracks in them, that's just an outside veneer. This building is multiple-layer brick, and you often see cracks on an outside layer that is not through. There is nothing structurally falling down on this building. Keep that in mind. It does not pose a danger to the public, nor does it pose a danger to anyone else, except when it's torn down. Then it poses an environmental danger. The interior, much of the interior is in excellent condition. It is already set up for housing use. It is set up for a multi-type of housing use. When they talk about that everything has to be handicapped accessible, that is not true by building code. Only 2% has to come up, which comes out to, or I think it's something like, but it comes out to two units for this building, two units would have to be handicapped accessible, but they can also take into account any other buildings on the campus, and if they are handicapped accessible, it counts towards those. So not every unit would have to be handicapped accessible, it would require two units with a roll-in shower. That's it, two units. The rest of these can be used as is, that the builders did not, or the razors did not take that into account. It also has a working elevator that meets code, that addresses handicapped accessibility to multiple levels. Otherwise, you can restrict your handicapped accessibility to first floor. So it's not that you have to have everything, but you could restrict it to first floor. I want to talk about a little bit on historic building undergoing repair, alteration or change of occupancy shall be investigated and evaluated. A written report shall be prepared. The report shall identify each required safety feature that is in compliance with this chapter, and where compliance with the provisions of this chapter would be damaging to the contributing historic features. This is coming right out of Minnesota Building Codes, Historic Building Codes, Chapter 12. It also said, "Conditions determined by the code office official to be unsafe shall be remedied. No work shall be required beyond what is required to remedy the unsafe conditions." So you can't ask a historic building to go over and above or to come into new status compliance. It also talks about existing door openings and corridors and stairway widths, less than those specified elsewhere in the code, may be approved, so you can have it less. The front or main exit doors need not swing in the direction of the path and can be approved if they are a historic feature. The same thing with one-hour fire rating, because the walls and finishes are plaster and lath, they don't have to meet the other stringent, more stringent fire code. So this goes on, it talks about stairways and railings, that they don't have to meet the full height. Existing handrails and guards at all stairs shall be permitted to remain, provided they are not structurally dangerous. In other words, they're not falling down, they're not breaking off. They may remain. So the whole thing about the stairways not, and the guards not meeting, do not meet the Minnesota code. Elements and spaces shall be exempt from this chapter to the extent specified, and that's for general exceptions to historic sites, buildings, structures, and facilities. I'm not going to go on beyond that. You can look for yourself if you want to look at the Minnesota Building Codes, you're quite welcome. You can talk to an informed building inspector who understands historic building codes. Many inspectors do not understand that, they only understand modern codes. There's a whole different world out there. So then I wanted to talk about the law. The law says, by your own laws, it says that you must preserve, I've got it here somewhere, but, your own ordinances say that you must preserve. Here it is. "The city council hereby declares as a matter of public policy that the preservation, protection, perpetuation, and use of areas, places, buildings, structures, lands, districts, and other objects having a special historical or cultural aesthetic interest or value is a public necessity and is required in the interest of public health, prosperity, safety, and welfare of the people of the city." When you take it down, you actually create a health hazard because of the things that are here. When they talk about deconstruct, this building isn't going to be taken down nicely, brick by brick and board by board. It's going to be smash, crush. That's the only way to take it down. You can't afford to take it down piece by piece, so remember that. It's smash, crush. What little bit you can save is very small. Having been involved in a number of deconstructions, you might call them, actually salvage operations of a building to be demolished, we found that the stained glass windows of that age are too brittle to be moved. They break. We couldn't save any of them, and we tried, and we tried, and we tried to save the beautiful stained glass windows from one of the buildings. We also found that bricks, to save them, you need to carefully remove, so each one is hand-done, and on the yellow brick, they often crack. Out of a whole building, we were only able to salvage about four pallets, and this took volunteers thousands of hours to do this. For the old growth lumber, we found that nobody wanted it. I'm sitting on 3,000 square feet of old growth lumber and wood flooring that shatters when you try to take it up, because it's 100 years old. You can't use them for outside benches, they're already too old to use that. I looked at what they said they would salvage. $145 a ton is what metal sells for today. Two volunteers, two full days, salvaged some metal at the Opera House. We worked on it. We took two truckloads, we got $28. And that was done by volunteers. Can you imagine if you have to pay someone to do this? The sisters aren't going to do this. They're going to have to pay somebody, so they will pay more than they will gain from any of it. So the property owner must not look at who they are or their financial conditions, only that the building is structurally sound, provides no danger. It costs nothing, nothing, zero. To leave it standing, that means that you are not doing a taking, something called a taking. You can't require them to put 12 million if it's not worth 12 million. That would constitute a taking, you can ask your attorney what that means. We are not asking for that. We are not asking for the sisters, or the owner, if you want to think of it that way, to do anything. But we are asking you to deny a permit. I'd like to yield the balance of my time to Lois Machi.
Some of you have gotten some of the pictures of the inside of Hurley Hall, because they came out, they were distributed, and if you take a look at the building, it, you can see, it's set up for housing, it's set up for people to come in, it's set up so that they have, like, rooms and bathrooms, et cetera. I would also like to read, because of the short notice that this meeting was, our other buyer that was interested sent it to me, and I'm supposed to read it to you. "Metro Plains Development Partners is interested in pursuing converting Hurley Hall into an affordable housing apartment community. Metro Plains has developed over 100 apartment communities over the last 40 years, some new and many that are historic rehabs like the Buckman Building." Just recently, there was this big thing in the paper in regard to the Buckman Building, and it's a gorgeous building. It's fixed up, and it's probably pretty much, I know they have some handicap areas on it, and some of them, so it's not all handicap accessible, but they did a wonderful job on it. We recognize, this is coming from the Metro Plains Development Partners, "We recognize that we are coming to this opportunity late in the game, and that certain plans have been set in motion to deconstruct the building. If we were given the opportunity to pursue this option, we would need two months to perform the feasibility studies." But I think part of that was, come of that, has been stated already with the studies that were done in April, I believe, and they said that Little Falls is in need of having more housing for the people. If we, if they are given the opportunity to pursue this option, they will need the two months to perform the feasibility studies. Assuming that we determine that a project in this location would be feasible, we would need to submit an application to secure tax credits to Minnesota Housing in May of 2023. That, I believe, is because the Congress has gone back home and they didn't come in with another, with an extension. Award letters will be issued in December of 2023. If we are selected, we would then work towards acquiring the building from its current owners. Unfortunately, this is the fastest we can move, because they have to get things in order and get approved. We think the building is beautiful and very much worthy attempting to repurpose, and it's worth attempting to do it. If you give us the opportunity to work on this, we will work diligently to determine feasibility immediately. Many thanks, Craig Stenson and Mike Bush, Metro Plains Development Partners LLC. So I am asking, and to have not one, but two people that are willing to buy it, I cannot see why the council would allow the demolition permit to go through. So we are asking, please deny the demolition permit, so that the sisters don't have to pay this $1 million to $2 million to take care of all of that. Let the buyers be able, you know, to do their, to do their thing and to get it to come. Housing for the city, security for the sisters, and the buyer would help complete dreams to reuse a local landmark instead of seeing it be a pile of debris, like many buildings in the Ukraine or the Dewey Radke Home. Why destroy our historical buildings for generations to come? Our kids and grandkids need to be able to see what was actually built back then. They're not going to be able to see it with a little monument, they're not going to be able to see it with a picture. You take the kids right next to where the people are, or where the building is, and have them to stand by it, it's monstrous, it's beautiful, it's gorgeous. So we are asking you, please, don't give the demolition permit, please deny it. And actually, not all sisters are in agreement to having Hurley Hall bulldozed into a heap either. So please take this into consideration when you are making your decision. Once it's gone, it's gone. And we don't have very, we don't have the buildings that we used to have here. So please, don't make the decision, make it in your mind, deny the permit for demolition. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the appellant?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. There's been talk that this would cost $12 million, a little over $12 million, to go through the deconstruction or demolishing process.
You're wrong. One to two million.
To demolish.
One to two million.
One to two million.
I'm sorry. The renovation would be about a little over $12 million.
I think it depends upon who you are talking to, if you are going to be hiring everything out. We do-
Please let me finish what I wanted to say.
Sorry.
So to renovate that building to be over, little over 12- So to renovate that building to be over, little over $12 million is, it seems somewhat a bit inflated because we are looking at building a 49-unit apartment building with a value of $8 million. And if, if you even can bring in the demolition of that building, you're looking at nine, a little over $90 million to tear this completely down and to rebuild a whole other unit. So this $12 million just seems kind of outlandish as far as renovation, to me.
There's a question for them, Jim.
So where, what is, what is your estimate on, on what it would act, what the cost would be to renovate that building? Or haven't you got them, that, that number, them numbers yet?
I do not have that number, but we do have one of the builder, or one of the buyers who wants to be able to. Do you have any of the information? Or do you, can you think of how much it would cost to renovate it off the top of your head?
Well, I would have to be able to walk through the building and perform my own inspection. It depends partially on floor plan and use. I've tried to reach out to the sisters to ask what kind of use of the building would be okay with them. So it really depend on that. It depended so much on what the, but I would say, any things for $4 million.
Did you hear that, Hubmer?
Yeah, I, I hear that he, there really is, there isn't an estimate on what it would actually cost, but.
But he was, he just told you what he would estimate that it was going to cost to do it.
And what was that number? He should step up to the mic if he's going to speak.
He said $4 million.
About $4 million.
But he also said he hasn't seen the building or the floor plans or what the layout is like.
I have seen the floor plans. And I've seen the inspection report. But I would think $4 million to get it done. But I have not had time to develop my own plans for the building. Scope of work, I have not had time to develop that. So, but to just throw a number out, I would say $4 million.
Do we have any other questions?
Okay, I have one more question. So if that's converted into apartment buildings, where, where would the parking be for those residents? Is there space there for parking?
There is some limited space. You're right that the space is limited, though. That's why my partner and I are discussing assisted living as one option. Many older people don't drive as much, and they are also right next to a hospital. But yes, that, that would be an issue, certainly.
Any other questions?
But if it, but if it's an assisted living, just recently, we were someplace, and what they had was like a, like a van that they could take the people, like on a certain day of the week, they could take them where they needed to go for their appointments or to pick up groceries or whatever, and then you don't need all the parking spaces.
Counsel President, I have a question.
Go ahead.
In 2016, there was a petition with a bunch of signatures on it, and then you were able to stop the Franciscan sisters from demolishing the building until 2019. It is now 2022, and I'm wondering if you've been able to do any kind of fundraising or come up with any monies for the salvage of this building?
Are you referring that we were, we were supposed to come up with the money?
I'm just asking if you've had opportunity to do any fundraising in six years.
We did have somebody who was interested in it. She told me that she did not feel that welcome when she was getting the tour of it and to get also the blueprints, et cetera. She is not with the company that we had at that time. And so at that time, and then COVID came, and the sisters have been locked up for over two years. How can you have somebody come in and take a look at the, at a building that they want, you know, that they're planning on demolishing, and buyers want to buy it so they can convert it into apartments for the, supposedly for the shortage of housing that we have here in this city? And if you, and if, I'll put this one also. If the council decides to let this demolition permit go through, do you think that the public is going to really believe that there is a shortage when there's this building already there? And all it has to do is be, you know, is to make it usable again?
We're answering questions now, though, Lois.
Would you please answer my question? Have you done any fundraising? Do you have a GoFundMe page? Do you have?
We have, we have a Facebook page. We do not have a membership. And we have done some fundraising, but, and they were to pay some of the bills that we had had. But we were not, because we do not own the building and because some of the people who want to buy it are having a hard time even getting to go in the building. And with the two years of COVID, we were not allowed to even come into the building anyway over there or to come into the convent because it was locked.
But during COVID, you could have had a GoFundMe page. You've had six years, and you could have raised $4 million maybe in that amount of time.
Well, we, at the, at the present time, and we thought that the sisters were going to be running some of the ads for it because they're, they, it said in one of the thing, one of the papers that came out like in 2016.
Thank you, Lois, but she, she asked a question, and we got that answered. And I think your time was up. Do we have any other questions?
I do, Mr. President, really quick, and this is going to be mainly for staff. And I would question all of the financials that have been thrown out. Is that even germane to the issue at hand?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lois.
You're welcome.
Now we'll hear from the applicant, the Franciscan sisters. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Mark Manderscheid. I live in St. Paul, Minnesota, 2136 Goodrich Avenue, in a 1924 house for which I've spent a whole lot of money keeping it to look like it did when it came out. This is not a contest here tonight between good and evil. Everyone in this room wants the best for Little Falls. This is hard. I can imagine that most of you would rather not be here this evening. And many of the members of the HBC expressed how they thought the decision they were faced with was a hard decision. It is a hard decision, but this is the task that occasionally befalls public officials. I've sat on your side of the table as a former member of the St. Paul School Board, and I understand, again, how hard these decisions can be. But I do want to tell you the sister's side of the story. Many of the sisters are here this evening. Sister Carolyn Law, Pat Foster, Cordy Korkowski, Julian Durkis, Shar Grossman, Carol Schmidt, and Grace Squera. These are women who have devoted their lives to the gospel of Jesus Christ, who have worked hard in their ministry over time, and who have contributed much, they and their fellow sisters, to the Little Falls community. Hurley Hall was the second building built on the sisters' property. The first was a shanty, and the very first building was long gone. Hurley Hall, built in 1891, performed many different ministry locations. It was a convent. It was a chapel. It was a hospital. It was a home for old people. It was an orphanage. In 1895, Mary Hall was built. It was initially built as St. Otto's Orphanage. That building sits just probably 100 feet, 150 feet maybe, from Hurley Hall. The building was renovated, exterior and interior, in the time period from 2002 to 2006. And it is probably that renovation which actually spelled the ultimate demise for Hurley Hall. The sisters became concerned about their finances, about their situation, about their declining numbers. They sought outside assistance to pull together recommendations as to what they should do. They hired YHR, an architectural firm out of the Moorhead area, to come in and assist them and give them guidance as to what to do with the buildings on their campus. They looked at cost. They looked at the demographics for the number of sisters that would be there, how long their lifespans would likely be, what their costs would be. And the decision was made in 2002 that what ought to happen is that Mary Hall should be renovated to be used for independent living. And so that is what the sisters did. Spent almost $4 million in the time period from 2004 to 2006 to renovate Mary Hall. Over time, the programs and uses on the campus shifted. There were fewer uses needed for the convent building. And so that also space was freed up in the St. Francis Center, the building originally constructed as a high school in the early 1940s. As that space became available then, programs that had been in Hurley Hall were moved to the St. Francis Center. You've heard that a couple of the buildings on the campus were designated as local landmarks. The sisters were in favor of those designations. Given the time period, they recognized the place that Hurley Hall and that the chapel held in this community. Those properties were designated local landmarks in 2003. So we have a campus. We have a group of religious sisters who live on this property, who run their ministries from this property, and time passed. In 2011, the sisters again sought outside counsel. They hired a national accounting firm out of Ohio, Plant Moran. Plant Moran also provided real estate assistance and analysis, and Plant Moran did a study. At that time, they looked at what the cost would be to renovate Hurley Hall. The costs then were in more, of more than $6 million in roughly the 2011 time period. They looked at the demographics and how the number of sisters were declining so that there would be even less need for some of the spaces on the campus. Plant Moran advised the sisters in 2011 that it was highly unlikely that there would be any buyer, any user that would come forward to want to use Hurley Hall because of the expense and the cost that would be entailed in renovating that property for ongoing uses. And so as time passed then, the programs all moved out of Hurley Hall. And in May 2016, the sisters held their goodbye ceremony for Hurley Hall. It was a religious ceremony, given to the honor of their sisters and their memory for all that they had done of Sister Teresa Hurley, for whom the building was subsequently named. And so the sisters sang songs. They offered prayers. They thanked God for the opportunities that this community has provided to them to minister to the community and to many places outside of Little Falls. The sisters, at that time then, assumed that what would happen in the normal course of things is at some point in the next year or two, probably the building would be taken down. The sisters were then sued by the Friends of Hurley Hall. Not much discussion ahead of time, although, as you noted, Ms. Hannafenberg was someone who met with the sisters' leadership in 2015. They had discussions. And so in 2016, the sisters got sued. I was the lawyer from a law firm which had long represented the sisters, who was assigned to this matter. I came up. I met with the sisters' leadership. We talked about the various things that were there and were an option. And typically, it is not the way of Franciscans to engage in litigation. There was discussion then about, is this lawsuit really necessary? Is this something that must go forward? And so the sisters determined that perhaps Plant Moran was wrong in 2011 when they told them no one was interested in the, in the building. And since the Friends of Hurley Hall and the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota felt so strongly that there was a market for this building, and there were developers out there who were willing to renovate this building, to do something with it, the sisters decided that they would give the market a chance to come forward, that they would give the Friends of Hurley Hall and the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota the opportunity to come forward. I'm hopeful that you have read the history. That was a part of the package that came from the sisters. In 2016, there was a press release that was issued by the Friends of Hurley Hall and the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota. Quotes, "Both organizations are working to attract developers for this unique opportunity for historic building reuse in central Minnesota. Parties interested in considering rehabilitation development opportunities for Hurley Hall," end quotes, the sentence continues, "were to contact either the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota or the Friends of Hurley Hall." Preservation Alliance has since had a name change. They are now RETHOS. That is the organization that Ms. Hannafenberg works for. There seems to be a lot of anger directed against the sisters, that maybe they haven't done all that they should do. The sisters stepped forward, when challenged by people who met well in the community, to see if there was another way. Time passed. The Friends of Hurley Hall and the Preservation Alliance came forward with one developer, Erin Anderson. She was given a tour of the building. She was given a complete set of blueprints for the building. I personally had multiple communications with Ms. Anderson, both by phone and by email over a period of time. And she apologized a couple of times for delay in getting to this, and no proposal was ever forthcoming. No proposal of any kind has been forthcoming until the last week. Nothing for almost six years of time that has passed. It is simply unfair for those who have blamed the sisters for not putting their building up for sale. This is not a typical situation that you run into where someone owns a property, and then when they would sell it, they're done. They're gone. This is a part of the sisters' campus. It's just a very short distance from Mary Hall, where sisters are living to this time. It's just a short distance from the St. Francis Center, where the sisters continue to run and to operate their ministry programs. And so in the 2016 timeframe coming forward, the sisters developed a set of criteria that they would be interested in before they thought it would be really worth their while to talk with someone. An experienced developer, a definite plan for how the property would be used, a complete set of floor plans for the four floors of Hurley Hall, and an understanding as to financing and as to the certainty of financing. No one with such a proposal has ever presented anything to the sisters. Sisters have received a couple of proposals here in the last couple of days. This is what the appellants have brought to your attention. But even those proposals, the one from Metro Plains, which tonight is the first time I've ever heard about the Metro Plains one, Metro Plains says, and it is the case, if a project were to be done using historic tax credits, the application is done in May. That would be next May of 2023. It's a competitive process. You don't even find out till later on. You may not be there, and developers aren't going to spend the time and the money to do those things until time has gone on. Time has passed, a lot of time. Now, when we made our presentation before the HPC, the person who knows the most about the condition of the building and the financing was out of the country. And I attempted to make a few comments, but I'm really not competent to talk about those things. So next, I would like to have David Larson come forward. He'll tell you about his background and some of the information that he prepared, which has been in the packet, which was presented to you. And I will be available for questions.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Counsel, for the opportunity to present. My name's David Larson. I live at 10848 Stanek Drive in Little Falls. I've been working with the sisters for over 10 years. It started with what was their property planning group and has evolved into being one of the committee members of the Hurley Hall subgroup. And a little bit of background about me. My employment, which I've worked for Centra Care Health System for 14 years in the capacity of the facilities leadership. So I'm in charge of all construction, remodeling, facilities operation, and maintenance for all of Centra Care. It's 10 hospitals, the biggest one you all know, St. Cloud Hospital. But to the point of just some relevance of how my involvement in working with the sisters is represented here today. Make no mistake, Hurley Hall is a, you know, historic commercial building. When it's compared to sort of residential or wood frame counterparts, it really can't be compared. It is not. It is not only in its historic nature unique, but also the fact that it is not fed in a normal way from a standpoint of utilities, how the building is part of a campus, all of this is interconnected. So it's a very complicated building. When we looked at the original 2011 Plant Moran assessment, where they contemplated what its future use could be, there were two options, looking at housing as one of them, as well as maybe it could be converted to more of an office building. So in taking that 2011 approach, the Hurley Hall subgroup said, if we were to look at it again today and update these numbers, and again, I just want to remind you, these numbers are budget ranges. It was brought up, how relevant are they? It's kind of scary in today's world of inflation and estimates, being in charge of 100 million-plus capital budget every year. People ask me, how confident are you in the number? And I used to say, pretty confident. And now I say, I have no idea, because it changes every day. What's happening in our industry right now from a construction standpoint, commodities, materials, you just can't make it up anymore. I've had bids come in and say, this is only good for three days. You have to make this decision. So to that end, I just want to reiterate, these were ranges. But the building, as it sits today, has some just base things that need to be addressed. The roof is one of them. That's come up on many occasions tonight. There's some structure underneath that roof that, over the years of leaking, that needs to be replaced. The full extent of that hasn't been fully assessed yet. The asbestos shingles at the dormer areas of the, of the roof that you can actually see from the front of the building, those are asbestos. They need to be abated and completely replaced. Windows were brought up, and depending on how this is approached, if the building were to use historic tax credits and were to be part of a historic renovation, it would need to meet the historic renovation standards. These numbers that you see in your packet don't represent a historic renovation concept, much like Mary Hall when it was renovated. They did put new windows in. Many people want to put new windows in for their energy efficiency updates, and so your operating expenses can be lower. Exterior doors, very similar to the same concept about the windows. Stair rating issue, there are two internal staircases within the building that are open to many of the floors that they serve. From a fire code standpoint, that's a very dangerous thing, especially if people are sleeping and living in this building. If you were to have smoke and fire start on the first floor, it's going to freely move throughout the building. While I understand some of the historic standards can be met because of what existed there, there's a practical sense of you want those occupants to be as safe as possible. And that's one thing that we looked at in making sure that the building was up to code, if you were from that standpoint. The additions that had been done over the years on the east side of the building were not done in a manner that was really the best methods of construction, and you can see that by the deterioration in the brick. So, you know, we came up with these options of whether it was going to be an office building or residential. The numbers that you've been hearing talked about today are obviously the more residential or housing. I just wanted to be able to speak to really the credibility of the Hurley Hall subgroup that has spent a lot of time discerning each aspect of this building and what would be really necessary to put for money into this thing. While I can appreciate many, you know, many people think it can be done cheaper, we are at a time, you know, in our region, in our world, that construction is as high as it's ever been. There actually doesn't appear to be an end in sight for that, which is a little bit alarming when we think about the needs of communities, especially with, as the topic around housing. But this kind of money as an investment in the community of Little Falls would be much better served as another project that would offer not only the appropriate amenities, up to code, and what would be the ease of not being in a constrained campus that is the Franciscan campus. So I would also open up for questions, and my colleague, Mark Manderscheid, is also available for questions as well, yes.
Counsel President, I have a question.
Go ahead.
You talked about how the building is part of a campus, and could you touch a little bit on how the heating system works for all the buildings?
Yeah, so, you know, the sisters did own the hospital at one time, and as the hospital was constructed, they took on a central boiler plant. Until a few years ago, it was actually still running on wood chips, which still blows my mind that they were using a wood burning boiler. I had never seen one before. But to that extent, the high-pressure steam that comes from the central boiler plant of the hospital is run through utility tunnels and then branched off to the various buildings. So one thing that is complicated about Hurley Hall, it is served from high-pressure steam, which is converted into low-pressure hot water in a utility tunnel underneath Hurley Hall, and that provides the heat that runs through all the registers, the good old registers that you see in many older homes, similar system in Hurley. And then Hurley Hall does not have central air conditioning. There's a few packaged residential units, much like, much like we have at our homes, that serve as cooling for much of the common areas, but really, I mean, the sisters would be able to speak to it, it doesn't do that great of a job. But most of the living areas and all of that, there is no air conditioning, other than where they had put in window units. So that's one contemplation in the redevelopment, is should that sever itself from the central utility of the hospital? It is submetered, so we have an idea what those operating expenses would be to any buyer, just to make that comment. There are operating expenses just to own the building.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
I may just close up our, our time period then.
I was struck when, here, two weeks ago, for the Heritage Preservation Commission hearing, at the depth of emotion that came forward from some people. Don Oment, I believe, sitting right, right over there, said that it was the hardest decision that he had ever, had to make as a member of the HPC. There was a lot of emotion that came out about that. And that is, that is something to be applauded, that people in Little Falls care so much about their history and about the structures, whether it's Linden Hills, whether it's the Sew Line Depot, whether it's the downtown. You have much to be proud of here in Little Falls. And I didn't even mention the Lindbergh House. The sisters' campus is, for parts of it at least, some of the older parts. Mary Hall is still there, it's good-looking. The chapel has been designated a local landmark. But what does Hurley Hall stand for? Some people think it's an attractive building, and it is an attractive building. But to the sisters, they said their goodbye in 2016 to Hurley Hall. They were willing to reconsider their action in light of some of the concern that had been put forward by members of your community, well-meaning citizens in Little Falls, some of whom attended the high school that used to be on the campus, things of that sort. But it is 2022. The sisters were willing to consider, willing to consider, there was some suggestion that it is kind of the sisters' fault because they didn't list the building for sale. No, this building has never been for sale. What the sisters said they would do is, working with the parties that sued them, they would seriously consider a proposal, if a proposal came forward, meeting some basic guidelines and other things, and if the use was consistent with their Franciscan values and with the use of the balance of their campus. The campus remains their home. The building has been empty now for over six years. It ought not to remain standing as an empty building. I believe one of those who preceded me at this lectern was suggesting that legally, you can't make the sisters fix it up, and that's true. That would be a taking, and then it would become the city's responsibility to compensate the sisters for that. And again, this is a hard decision as to what should happen. No one is elated, no one is happy about being in this position. But the sisters have been thoughtful. The sisters have been careful. The sisters have been thrifty. The sisters have tended to their ministry. Your HPC members were thoughtful. They were careful. They read the materials that had been provided to them. And on behalf of the sisters, the sisters believe that the time has come, a decision needs to be made, and the sisters ask that you affirm the decision of the Heritage Preservation Commission. Now, I understand that there might be a little bit of a confusion with a question in your ordinance. Your ordinance says the decision needs to be in accord with the standards of the Secretary of the Interior. Your ordinance also says that demolition permits can be given, and there is a section of the code that deals with the Heritage Preservation Commission, which identifies that if a demolition permit is to be issued, the HPC can require mitigation measures. And so the sisters understood, given the importance of the sisters to the Little Falls community and the importance of many of the structures on their campus, that if they were going to come to the city with a deconstruction proposal, they were going to need to identify how they would mitigate the loss of the structure. And so they presented a proposal which identified the intent to preserve many of the items. They would like to preserve as many of the stained glass windows as they can and to make those available for future use in other ecclesiastical structures. They would like to salvage the large timbers. The building was built differently than things would be done now. The structure of the building is the brick and the timbers, and so they would hope to salvage many of the timbers. They would hope to salvage many other items in the building, many of the metals, some of the brick, many of the other items. And then, as the deconstruction would be coming to a close, it would be the intent of the sisters to come back to the city with a more complete plan for a memorial, memorial to be built with the materials from the deconstructed building, and a plaque to talk about the ministry of the sisters that has gone forward in Little Falls. That is how the sisters would prefer that they be remembered in this community, that they be remembered for their ministry, for the hospital, for the schooling, for the care of orphans and the aged. That is how they would prefer to be remembered. It is simply not a part of the Franciscan creed to be remembered by a building, but to be remembered by how they showed the love of God and love of other persons. And so I have nothing else. If you have any questions, I will answer those, but otherwise, that's our presentation. We provided you written materials. I hope we've given you some background on this, but if there are questions, myself and Mr. Larson would stand ready to answer whatever questions you might have.
Counsel, have any questions?
Yeah, Ms. President, so there's no room right now for any negotiations to, it's just not going to happen to talk with these people that are coming forward now? It's, there's, there's no room for that?
Mr. Starlee, that is a somewhat difficult question to answer. The sisters do not intend at this time to change their standards. Their standards have been, and this has been consistent, it was quoted in the materials we gave you, this was part of where they are coming from. If the sisters were going to seriously consider a proposal, it would need to come from an experienced historical properties redevelopment party. It would need to provide a full indication of how the building would be used, because this is a part of their campus. To separate this property from the rest of campus, where are you going to park? Where are you going to provide green spaces? More than likely, it would require multiple variances from the city in order to actually make that an independent parcel of real estate. They would require an indication as to how the building would be used. Would the later additions, which are made of different colored brick, a different shape, which aren't in very good condition, would those be a part of the proposal or would those be removed? And then finally, what is the nature of the financing and the certainty of the financing? Mr. Francis came forward and suggested he would pay $1. It appeared as though he was asking for the sisters to give him $1 million, and he would put on a roof, and nothing further has come from him. I spoke this morning with a developer out of Rochester who hasn't expressed an interest in the building. He explained, much as apparently the individual from Metro Plains did, that if they were to be interested in the building, they would only do so if they could get historic tax credits, that they could not submit an application for that until May of 2023, they wouldn't know until the end of 2023. And at that time, they would make a decision as to whether they were really serious about going forward with the proposal or not. And so those are the only proposals that we have received. That criteria, we looked at, and I just want to emphasize again, the building has never been for sale. No, it has never been listed. In an effort to try to resolve a lawsuit, the sisters changed course and said that they would consider a redevelopment proposal if one came forward. They would hold off for three years. The sisters have held off for six years. They have done what they said they would do.
Any other questions? City Attorney Harrington will now quickly review the decision before us and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Council President, Council members. I won't make, I won't go into this in detail. Quickly, just to make it clear, the, I want to correct a couple of things first. The city council did make the decision by ordinance, as is allowed under statute, that in the, in Little Falls, the HPC does have the ability to approve or disprove the demolition permit on their own without the city council action. So I just wanted to make it clear that you are, in fact, making a review of their action. You are not in any way making a initial decision. So given that, then, the city council's decision is limited to the review of the HPC's decision, subject to what we've discussed. The potential actions at this point are to affirm the decision of the HPC, either accepting or modifying their findings, to overrule the decision of the HPC and approve a resolution with findings stating the reason for denying the said permit, or to postpone either for a recess to July 5th, for example, to gather more information, or to postpone the decision and approval of a resolution until July 5th with whatever types of resolutions you might instruct the staff to prepare. Do you have any questions at this time?
During our deliberations, the council may certainly ask additional questions of staff. We will now begin our deliberations. As a reminder, City Attorney Harrington has listed the five different options available for motions on this matter in the packet.
Are you looking for a motion?
That's what I was going to ask.
I would think that would be in order.
Okay. I, I will make a motion affirming the decision by the HPC approval of the deconstruction demolition permit for Franciscans, Sisters of Little Falls.
A second that.
A motion by Councilmember Hanson, a second by Councilmember Lundberg. Discussion, but I do have one question. It says in my notes, a resolution?
Council President and Councilmembers, if you are to simply adopt the findings of the HPC, you can add that to your motion, and that would take care of that requirement.
Discussion.
Did I phrase that correctly?
Well.
Did I get my motion?
I was just wanted to ask because it said resolution in here, so if we need a resolution...
Are you saying I need to amend my motion?
I, to just include the, approve their decision and their findings, just those two words, that was it.
Approve their decision and their findings.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to add, we do need housing, we do need a lot of housing. And I believe the entire council understands that. But there's other reasons for this decision. You know, and to know that we're covered with the decision that we make based on the recommendation of the HPC, I understand that. And so hopefully, no matter what happens here, the public does understand we need housing in Little Falls.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I agree with the mayor, and with, with a, with a real sad heart, I'm going to vote to affirm that decision too, because this is property owned by the sisters. To separate a little chunk of that out, to make something... To separate a little chunk of that out, to make something available to an outside source, I don't think is right. I wish there was something that could have been done, and I'm sure whatever the friends of Hurley Hall are going to do, I'm sure that's a decision that they're going to have to make, but I'm going to honor those Sisters' wishes, and I will be, with a heavy heart, voting to approve that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That'll end our appeal hearing. Next on the agenda is the surplus properties award.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. So with the surplus property, we are just requesting that you award the high bid, with the exception of the granite curbing that was in the packet. The city has found a use for that item, so we're requesting that you award the high bid, but deny the high bid of just the granite curbing in that.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve.
Can I just get you to say approve with the exception of...
I move to approve with the exception of withholding the granite curbing, since the city has found a use for it. That makes me happy.
What are you going to use it for?
The parking lot up by the new playground, by the arc up there. We will be putting it around there so that folks know basically where to stop. We were originally going to be using boulders, we don't have as much of those as we had originally thought, so we'll be using it up in that location.
I missed who the second was.
There wasn't one yet.
Oh, yes, there was, that second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Old business, we have none. Personnel, recommendation of the interview committee, appoint Eric Hawkinson, utility technician, approved. And I'm not sure who's doing that one.
I will. Thank you, Mr. President. So this evening, in front of you, we have a new applicant, Eric Hawkinson, would be the utility technician. We did receive eight applications for the position, and we did interview Eric for this one. He does come with quite a bit of experience, and so this evening, we are asking the council to approve the hire of Eric Hawkinson for the utility technician, as well as the lateral pay as indicated in the ASME agreement, and his beginning date would be July 13th.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the interview committee and appoint Eric Hawkinson as a utility technician.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Knopfler. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Participation grant agreement, Lexipol chief.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Tonight, I'm requesting approval to enter into an agreement with Lexipol to essentially adopt and update our policy manual at the police department. This would be part of a community impact funds grant through Sourcewell. Communities involved in this program are Baxter, Wadena, Crosby, Crosslake, and Niswa. The program would cover the first half, or the prorated amount for this year, which is $4,446.90. The implementation support to implement the program at $7,284, and then the first-year The funds would be contingent on Sourcewell's board approval, I believe that's tomorrow, so I would ask that your approval be contingent on their approval.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to approve and authorize the chief to participate in the grant agreement with the approval of, who was that going to be?
The Sourcewell board.
Sourcewell board.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm on the board of directors, can I vote on this? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I abstain.
Resolution 2022-50, supportive job creation fund application, Wabash National, adopt.
Evening, members of the council. Tonight you have before you a resolution in support of job creation fund application for Wabash. As we learned a couple meetings ago, Wabash is working on an expansion at their current facility, and in addition to the MIF application, the Minnesota Investment Fund application, they are looking to do a job creation fund with the state of Minnesota. That requires the city of Little Falls to pass a resolution that we are in support of that application, so that is the resolution before you tonight.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to adopt Resolution 2022-50.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfler, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? Resolution call a roll, please.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
City council reports and city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything?
Mr. President, I would just add that Mr. Radamacher and I, and I believe Hannah, is going up to, are going up to Duluth for a League of Minnesota Cities Conference, and on two of the mornings, I will have a mayor's breakfast and a Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities breakfast, so looking forward to that. I always learn some things, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion about what's going on with the legislature. That's it.
Any announcements?
Mr. Council President? I think it's worth noting that tonight is Lori's last council meeting. And with that, we do have a celebration for tomorrow, and I hope that you guys can find the time to attend, but I want to offer my sincere thanks and gratitude for 40 years of service.
Zach, can we get a picture of Lori? I see other entities having retirees' pictures on the...
Sorry. She's going to be crying all day tomorrow anyway, so...
I have 10 days with her, okay? Not yet.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Then we will adjourn at 9:28.
I was hoping she wasn't going to decide that. No. The size of you, wait till everybody left.
You know what I'd like to see is, like the record, or like the county does, I would like to see our entire council in this picture with you and with Lori. That's all right. Zach?
Here, do you want...